All right, it's light 201. You ready there, pal? Call to order the Sparks City Council meeting of March 23rd, 2015 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Byby.
Here.
Schmidt, absent. City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
If you don't stand for the invocation speaker, David Quick, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Welcome, sir.
Our Heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity that we have to meet here today in this city council chamber. We are grateful for the opportunity that we have to participate in our government. We are thankful for the wonderful weather that we've enjoyed. We are thankful for all of the blessings that Thou has given us. We ask that Thy Spirit will be here with us as we meet and consider the different things that are on the agenda for the moving forward of our city. Again, we are grateful for all the many blessings that we enjoy, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, sir. I want to put your phones on vibrate. Checking mine right now.
We know you've made it here with GPS.
Chief of Maintenance standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Lawson, would you lead us?
Yeah, please join me in the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is public comment. Anyone want to speak in their public comment? Okay. Let's move on to the approval of the agenda. I'd like to move 9.1 up and present it after 7.5, after the presentation of Trucky Meadows, Keep Trucky Meadows Beautiful, that's the agenda item that's pertaining to that one. So could I get a motion to with that change, please? It's ready.
I move to approve the agenda, moving 9.1 up to follow 7.5.
Do a second, Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. There you go, okay. Please display. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is the approval of the minutes. Consider as possible approval of minutes for the regular Sparks City Council meeting of March 9th, 2015, and February 24th, 2015. Any omissions, corrections, or deletions? Okay, looking for a motion, Ron Smith.
Would you approve?
Charlene.
Second.
Whoa.
That's a big second.
We have a motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Byby, to approve the minutes of March 9th and February 24th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is announcements, presentations, recognition items. First is going to be a proclamation for Better Together Walk Run for Sparks Middle School. So I'm going to have Ms. Byby read the proclamation, and then you guys can come up, say a few words, or whatever you need to do.
I'm afraid I'm all out of my mic. City Sparks Proclamation. Whereas the Better Together Walk Run for Sparks Middle School will be held June 6th, 2015, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Sparks Middle School. This event has two purposes. The first is to be an annual fundraiser sponsored by students, staff, Sparks Middle School alumni, and friends of Sparks Middle School. The second purpose is to build community here in Sparks where people who support Sparks Middle School come together at our event and get to know each other. Our community has done so much for us and continues to support all of us here at Sparks Middle School. Now, we want to bring folks together because along our journey, we have learned that we truly are better together. Now therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim June 6th, 2015, as Better Together Walk Run for Sparks Middle School Day. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sparks, Nevada, to be affixed this 29th day of January, 2015. Gino R. Martini.
Do you want me to present, or do you want them to talk and then I present?
Yeah. Come on up and say something. Just introduce yourself for the record, and just say a few words if you want, or whatever you want to say.
Okay, I'll model for them. My name's Dana Sereni, and I am a community member on the Better Together Walk Run Committee. Our big decision that we made is that when tragedy happens, communities come together. And our school is still standing and doing amazing things together because we have our community behind us, and we want to show our community that we're there for them. So I could sit up here and brag about these students and that school all day long because they are amazing, but I think they do a pretty good job of doing that all by themselves.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Rodriguez, and I'm a student at Sparks Middle School. Why I think we should do this Walk Run for Sparks Middle School is to help us with our funds and to give us more tools for our education. And like she said, our school has gone through its tragedy, and what I think is that we've risen up farther than ever before.
Thank you, Jerry. Don't be nervous, there's only 2 million people watching, so don't be nervous. Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name's Kimberly, and I'm from Sparks Middle School, and I'm very proud to be. Well, first of all, I just want to make sure, like, well, I want to see if we do this fun because I feel that it not only will, like, help us out in, like, our school supplies and things, but like, not only will it bring us together as a school, but like, as a community, and I would like to see that. Because like, how nice would it be to see all of Sparks and everyone else all together, united as one?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rosa Snarrows from Sparks Middle School, and I would like to invite all of you to be part of the Better Together Walk Run at Sparks Middle School because not only as a school we need to be united, but as a community to make not only Sparks, but the whole Nevada united, and to know that we're all together, standing with each other.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. What can the people here who are watching us online, how can we get involved? I mean, what kind of sponsorship do you need? Do you have booths? Do you have, besides running, what is it the community can do either now or on that day?
Thank you so much for asking that. We have many sponsorships. If you are interested in becoming part of those sponsorships, they are in different levels. The way the sponsorships work, there are large businesses who would like to participate in it. We have to have $5,000 as a start-up to actually run a run. So we're asking for people to sponsor that, to help us through that. You can go onto Sparks Middle School's actual Washoe County site, and there's a link to our Facebook page that links all the different types of sponsorships. We're also having what we call a comeback zone. We want everyone to be part of our comeback story, and that is all for home-based businesses who will be donating items to be put in a raffle for people to be able to purchase raffle tickets. And then if you want to run, you can go on there, and there's a link to actually register for the run, and it is going to just be a whole morning dedicated to helping Sparks out, and we also have a GoFundMe account. So if you type in Better Together Run Walk Sparks, GoFundMe is there, and we would love to have some help with that.
And the kids are well-prepped because we have to have propaganda, because that's how it works, and they have it all here to hand out to everybody, and would you like us just to leave it here for everyone, or?
Wouldn't you leave it with the parents?
Okay. And if anyone in the crowd would like those two, I guarantee you, they brought plenty, they're smart kids.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, oh, you've got one too. Yeah. It's my favorite color, too, and it's the City Sparks color.
Okay, and I think Chief Allen has something he'd like to say, too. Come on up, chief.
How are you guys doing? The Sparks Middle Farm on the game is to seize money from those criminals that are using their money to for criminal advantages. When we get that money, I have the honor and privilege of being there to spend that money. However I seek it, I would like to donate $500 of our crime toll to your guys' office. Give me your information, we'll figure out how to work out with our finance director, and we'll give you guys $500 of the criminals' money.
Thanks, chief.
Nice.
Good job. Okay, 7.2, Proclamation, The Week of the Young Child. Is there someone here to accept this? Okay, I'll just go ahead and read it, then. Whereas the Reno Association for Education of Young Children, REAC, and our local organization is in conjunction with the National Association of the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the week of the young child. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs, that can provide a foundation of learning for children in Sparks and Reno. And whereas teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of our young children in Sparks and Reno deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are critical to their future. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby recognize April 12th through the 18th, 2015, as the week of the young child, and encourage all citizens to work to make a good investment in early childhood in Sparks and Reno. Okay, let's move on to 7.3, Proclamation, Nevada Moves Day. I think Ms. Ratty is going to read this. Anyone here to accept this, Nevada Moves Day? Come on down.
It's been around seven years.
Yes, it is. Seems like just last year this time we had this.
Whereas parents driving children to school can account for up to 25% of the morning rush hour traffic in the vicinity of schools. And whereas walking and bicycling to school reduces the number of vehicle trips in the vicinity of schools and potential conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians or bicyclists. And whereas reducing the number of vehicles driving students to school results in increased safety, reduced traffic congestion, improved air quality, and less fuel consumption in the vicinity of schools. And whereas the benefits related to physical activity in an early age play a leading role in reducing rates of heart disease, diabetes, and other obesity-related problems among children. And whereas children walking and bicycling to school together with parents and caregivers opens opportunities to mentor children about pedestrian and bicycle safety and its benefits related to health and the environment. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around Nevada are joining together to walk and bicycle to school on Nevada Moves Day on March 18th, 2015. Now therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 18th, 2015, as Nevada Moves Day. In the City of Sparks, sorry, and encourages citizens to walk or bicycle their children to school while celebrating the benefits of increased safety and health this day and
Good afternoon. I'm MJ, the coordinator with Safe Routes to School for Washoe County School District. On the monitor, you'll see something that I put together from last year. Our Nevada Moves was last week, and in preparation, I didn't have the pictures ready for y'all already. We had 21 schools this year. These little guys are the first graders at Robert Mitchell. This year, we had, at the 21 different schools, yoga, jump rope, hula hoop, dancing. We had our walk to school with, we had our walk to school with Lincoln Park, or with Lincoln Park right around the corner, and all the different agencies came together to escort the kids and to walk them. Even NHP helped us out crossing McCarrum, which is a hazard route. It's got the new intersection, the light, that is specific to getting the pedestrians and bicyclists across safely. At each school, when the kids stopped and did their activities throughout the day, the principals went over the loudspeaker, and they were able to speak about the walking and the bicycling safety tips that were on the forms that go home with the kids at those schools. We had over 9,000 children participate. So it was extremely exciting, and I appreciate you guys taking your time out again this year. I look forward to having another year. This was our sixth annual, and Safe Routes to School is glad we're able to get this message out. If we can start the children being healthy early, then they can keep those habits for the rest of their lives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Okay, 7.4, Proclamation, Procurement Month. Is someone here, there he is, I knew you had a suit on for some reason. Whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business. And whereas in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement adds value to the organization by performing such functions such as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating work relationships with suppliers and other departments, excuse me, within the organization. And whereas public procurement professionals in our region and in our public and private organizations have tremendous influence on the economic conditions in the United States, we accumulate purchasing power running into the billions of dollars. And whereas the City of Sparks Purchasing Division is committed to providing high caliber strategic logistical and operational support of all departments. And whereas Mr. Dan Maron has been the city's Contracts and Risk Manager since 2005, and is a Certified Purchasing Manager and Certified Public Procurement Officer, and has contributed to securing the Universal Public Procurement Certification Council Agency Certificate Award in the Small Agency category for six consecutive years, as well as twice receiving the Council's Sterling Agency Award. And whereas the Institute for Public Procurement has proclaimed the month of March as Procurement Month to be further expand the awareness of the purchasing professional's role to governmental officials, the general public business and corporate leaders. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim March 2015 as Procurement Month. Go ahead, Dan.
Well, thank you. Dan Maron, you're Contracts and Risk Manager for the record. I appreciate the proclamation. I appreciate that someone picked up on the fact that it is Purchasing Month. As a note of business, try and keep below the radar, try and keep us out of the papers. Public procurement is one of those functions where we work very hard to make sure that we're giving the best bang for the taxpayer dollar, and keeping you well-protected with respect to the law and how we do things. I'm most proud of the fact that the job is not the same day-to-day, dealing with different departments, and all of their various needs. And as you can imagine, from public safety to parks to finance, it is different every day. But as you pointed out this morning at your state of the city, you can be most proud as a council that, at least in our last reporting period, we kept 80% of our dollars within the state of Nevada. And of that, 94% of that 80 was in northern Nevada. So if you ever have need for those numbers, they are available, but I again thank you for the proclamation and the time you're taking today.
Okay, 7.5, Presentation by Kristi Kakeruglu from Keep Trucky Meadows Beautiful. Kristi, welcome. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Thank you, Mayor Martini, Sparks Council, for allowing me to come today. I appreciate it. We actually do have a presentation to share with you, and I understand that I owe you an apology. I guess we were on the agenda a few weeks ago, and we didn't know it, so I'm happy to be here today. I'm here to talk trash. And for those of you who are not familiar with Keep Trucky Meadows Beautiful, we are a small nonprofit organization. We're growing. I say small, but we're growing. And we are an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful, so we are your local affiliate, Keep America Beautiful affiliate here in the Trucky Meadows. We're governed by a board of trustees, and more than 90% of every dollar that we receive goes directly to programs. What's different about us being a private nonprofit with Keep America Beautiful is most of Keep America Beautiful's affiliates are public service or public works departments, but we operate primarily with, through private funds, grants, foundations, individual giving, and of course, we do thankfully receive quite a bit of in-kind government support and some cash support, and we'll talk a bit more about that in a little bit. One of the key things that we do at Keep Trucky Meadows Beautiful is we provide education. We want to raise awareness with the youth in our community, as well as some of, you know, some of our fellow adults, about the importance of maintaining a clean community. We have seen over the past 10 years that the amount of trash that we are disposing of is increasing. We've gone from throwing away 4.4 pounds of trash per person per day, to throwing away 7.1 pounds of trash per person per day in the last 10 years. And so what we're trying to do at KTMB is raise the red flag and say, you know what, we want to turn that around, because we, when you have a lot of trash leaving your, being disposed of, some of that ends up in areas where it shouldn't, you know, like along fence lines and in the landfill, and we want to look at how can we reduce the amount that we're consuming. And so this is part, this slide here is part of a PowerPoint presentation that we provide to community groups through our Speakers Bureau. One of the key things that we try to do at KTMB is engage local residents in maintaining a clean community. And so we provide supplies, and we help organize cleanups. This photo here is a couple who live in the Northwest, and they wanted to do a cleanup in their neighborhood, and they had such a great time doing it through our support. They now do it as an annual event in their neighborhood every year, and that's what we're really here to encourage, is people taking control on their own. We want to empower individuals. And one of the great things about our community is how lucky we are to live in such a beautiful area. What tends to happen when there's things like illegal dumping, or litter, things like that, businesses and municipalities tend to pay the most. And so we want to raise awareness about the fact that we are very lucky to live in a clean community. I mean, how many people can boast a scene like that in their town? And so we want to highlight that litter decreases property values, it's a cost that we pay through taxes, and when people dump illegally, it may seem like they're saving money, but that cost comes back to us, because they're actually stealing from our community. Disposing of items properly actually helps to support our friends and neighbors who work for disposal companies. And so we want to remind people that taking care of our waste in a proper manner is the best way to go. A couple of years ago, we had kind of an emergency situation in our parks where there was so much dog waste, it was actually toxic to go out and play in parks. And so we really want people to think about that, and you know, it's not like we have bears overruning our community, you know, leaving behind droppings, it's the dogs. We need to, you know, think about what we're leaving behind as individuals. So again, just what we're trying to do is engage people in helping to keep their backyard clean. One thing that was, we initiated several years ago, back in 2006, through the Illegal Dumping Task Force, was the 329 Dump Hotline. And that's one way in which residents can be empowered to report on illegal dump sites that they see, or illegal dumping activity that they may see happening in their community. It's 329 Dump, D-U-M-P, is actually managed by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and they will go out and prosecute individuals. And when they catch businesses who are dumping, and a lot of the dumping we see is from private contractors who aren't taking care of their disposal properly, that those businesses will lose their business license. So we really want to see that happen. Right now, within the City of Sparks, we have 53 active adopters. This is an idea of all the different types of cleanups that we help facilitate through Keep Trucky Meadows Beautiful. And this is an example of some of the illegal dump sites that were cleaned up within the City of Sparks during the last, Great Community Cleanup last May. And of course, there's the cost of illegal dumping, the before and after. We really want to keep it looking like this. This is our goal. So to give you some numbers about, specifically for some of our activity within the City of Sparks, this last year during 2014, some of the projects that we've done within the City of Sparks have engaged close to 500 volunteers, who removed over three and a half tons of trash and three and a half tons of green waste. And that was through projects like the Great Community Cleanup, Trucky River Cleanup Day, and Make a Difference Day, which is an adoptive park project we do in October. And of course, we do Christmas tree recycling at a Shadow Mountain Sports Complex every year. How many of you recycled your trees out there? Thank you. So it's a great site. Our volunteers love it. And to give you an idea of some of the government support we receive, we receive the equivalent of $15,000 in free rent utilities from Washoe County every year. We receive $15,000 of cash in the City of Reno. And in 2007, City of Sparks increased your donation from $5,000 to $8,000 annually, also added in the revenue some of the $2 per head from the Turkey Trot in 2007. So it was a substantial increase in support, which we appreciate very much. And just with the recession, we've had some things that have been cut back slowly. And so one of the things is, we know, we want to point out that we do bring value with the support that you give us. And so the current value, the independent sector of value of the volunteer hour is 19:05 an hour, and if you multiply out all the hours that our volunteers did in the last year, that comes out to close to $40,000. Okay, so one of the ways in which we're working on expanding is through the Speakers Bureau, that I mentioned before, trying, you know, educating adults and trying to reengage them and helping to support a clean community. We also have something called Waste Warriors, which is an education program that we do in the schools. We're expanding that to include weed warriors and watershed warriors. And that, the focus of that is, the request from some of the teachers that we work with in the school district, they've asked us to expand our environmental education curriculum because there's such a lack of environmental education curriculum out there, and so we are working to support that. We also coordinate something called the Corporate Green Council. And again, it's better to, it's better to engage businesses in maintaining a clean community and help them educate their employees about the importance of a clean community. We're also expanding Adopt a Spot this year, from roadway adoption to include open space areas, river areas, and also parks. And I know you already have in Sparks your own Parks Program, but we are partnering with you to help promote that. And so as you can see here, one of the things we were able to do last year, we were able to secure a grant from Lowe's that secured about $4,000 worth of equipment. You can see Rick Darby there, holding one of those that we purchased through that grant. So that's what we do through our partnership. Now, one of the things that I'm most excited about, I have to say, that we're focused on expanding, is our efforts with the Trucky River. expanding, is our efforts with the Trucking River. And so we, KTMB has been coordinating the Trucking River Cleanup Day every year for the last several years. And it's become very clear that once a year cleanup's not enough, which is why we're expanding our Adopt a Spot program to include Adopt a River. But what we also need to do is we need to look at having a long-term plan for the maintenance of the river. And it's become surprisingly clear that we do not have short or long-term plans for the river. And so what we're putting together through our partnership we have with the Nevada Land Trust, we just secured initial funds for this, is a Trucking River Corridor Management Plan. And that's something that we are looking at identifying short and long-term solutions for things like recreation, water quality, public safety, all these different areas that need a focus. I can tell you from anecdotal evidence that the city of Reno section of the river is far worse than your section of the river. But once we start focusing on the city of Reno section of the river, which we will be because that's phase one, I'm sorry to tell you, I expect that the Sparks section of the river may start getting degraded too. So we need to look at a comprehensive overall management plan for the entire length of the river. And that's what we're working on at KTMB. That's the number, the number four, the Trucking River Corridor Management Plan. We are hoping that the multi-jurisdiction River Ranger will grow out of the number four. So this, these are the phases of our plan. Phase one will be the Reno section of the river up to the Glendale Bridge because that's the most degraded section. And then we'll be focusing on phase two, the Sparks section. And so I'm excited to have an opportunity to raise awareness with you that we're making this happen because at some point we'll be coming back to you and asking for some representative from city of Sparks to help guide us as we move forward on this plan. You have any questions?
Questions for Kristi. Comments?
Well, thanks, Kristi. You guys do great work. I, you know, I've been out with you, as you know, to different spots, and you showed me the stuff that's out there. It's just hard to comprehend, hard to believe that there's that much stuff out there. And if nobody takes it on, it will never get done. So I appreciate what you guys do. You know, you can really see from, you know, once you go out first and see the garbage and then go back and see how it's cleaned up, it's very gratifying for me what kind of work you folks do. So I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, let's go to nine point one. Consideration and Discussion and Possible Approval of Payment of Ten Thousand Dollar Donation to Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful. Go ahead, Chris.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chris Severson, Administrative Services Director, for the record. Before you, you have a funding request for Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful. Great segue, don't you think? The, previously have, we have been approved for six thousand and twelve dollars for our annual funding, and at the request of Councilwoman Maddie, we are coming forward to ask for an increase in that funding and also the approval to do the funding for this year. So with that, I'm ready to answer any questions.
Questions. Ms. Bybee.
So we have six thousand dollars in this year's budget.
Yes.
We are asking for an additional ten for this year?
An additional four.
Oh, to bring it to ten?
To bring it to ten, yes.
And then budget ten thousand for the upcoming, next year's budget?
I believe so, yes.
Or just, we're just looking at this total amount to be ten thousand?
We would look for it to go ongoing at ten.
Okay, keep it at ten.
Four additional for this year, ten ongoing.
Okay. And I guess, I mean, obviously what, what they do is incredible, and it is needed. I guess my question is, it's over budget, and where does the money come from? Where do we get, where do we get the money to do this? Not saying that it's not warranted, but where will the money come from?
My understanding is that it, there is additional money in, I believe it, Services and Supplies Budget or the Funding Budget. We do have some additional leftover.
Okay.
Ms. Ratty.
So again, it was brought to my attention after the budget process that Trucking Meadows Tomorrow, I mean, not Trucking Meadows, Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful, one of those fabulous nonprofits in the community. So I, I knew that we had reduced their, their rate for the past several years during the recession, and I want to say that Ms. Kekirugulu and her team have been very accommodating, came to the table and said, absolutely, we understand. But after the budget process, as we saw the economy starting to turn around, and I was reminded that this is what, what was going on, it was, it was my initiative to bring it forward and say, the right thing to do here is that Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful has not only maintained their service level, but they've increased their service level during the recession. I was able, on the Parks and Recreation Commission, to see a presentation about the expansion of the Adopt a Spot and some particular focus on some areas outside of our great regional park out in Spanish Springs. And that really struck me, as well as the river project. And again, these are new initiatives, an organization that is really tapping into what happened during the recession, where there were so many volunteers who wanted to step forward and help and maintain the level of service. So I felt like it was the right thing to do as the economy was starting to turn around, to return them to a level of service that was equitable to the level of effort and return on investment that we're getting as a city. You know, we could approach this a number of different ways. I'm pushing for ten thousand because I think not only, you know, getting them back to their prior level would be great, but five years have gone by without any, not only taking a step back, but not having the opportunity to take a step forward. So I'm comfortable with the ten thousand dollar number, and would look to see that moving forward into the next, you know, the upcoming fiscal years. So that's what I'm asking for, but I'm open to other suggestions.
Ms. Lawson.
Well, I think it's a good investment in our community and the economic development part of it. We have a lot of folks coming our way, and to see the hills filled with trash is not good. So I think four thousand dollars is an incredibly small amount to invest in keeping our community beautiful.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a ten thousand dollar donation to Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful.
Ms. Bybee.
Second.
We have a motion for Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve the ten thousand dollar donation to KTMB. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristi. Appreciate it. So I don't know what happened there. Okay, consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? We have eight-one through eight-three. If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Move to approve consent items eight point one through eight point three as outlined by staff.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve consent items eight-one through eight-three. Any further discussion? All, please, seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Nine point two and possible, or Consideration and Possible Approval of the Mayor's Recommendation of Appointment to Western Nevada Department District from following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Okay, Mr., go ahead, Mr.
If you just finish that sentence, I'm done.
Okay. Of Christopher Dare and David Espinoza.
Thank you.
Is that what you wanted? Okay.
That was all I was going to have to say. It's, at this point, it's up to you, sir.
Okay, I was going to make a recommendation of Christopher Dare, and I want to do that, but then we're going to open it up for discussion and see, because I understand there may be some other consideration here that I'd like to hear about. So is there any, any further discussion? Ms. Bybee.
I would, I would like to support David Espinoza. I've known him several years, and I think that, I think that his business expertise and background would be a good fit for this commission. And I know Christopher has amazing community involvement, but my support for Dave is based on how long I've known him and the, the fact that he brings a business, business expertise. He is bilingual. That might be a, you know, an added factor to it, but I think strictly from the business expertise and experience that he has. And he is, he is my, in disclosing, he is my representative to the Charter Committee.
Mr. Lawson.
I think you got two great choices, and I hate to, you got the tough choice here, Mr. Mayor, but both of them are great choices. I know David and I know Christopher, and both would make wonderful additions to that board, along with myself and Councilman Schmidt.
Therein lies the problem.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
So we're only going to pick one? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, we get one, a primary and a secondary off council plus one from the community. And that, that would be David or Chris.
Okay. So having said that, somebody want to make a motion?
No, okay.
Mr. Smith.
I thought we were gonna, we had them both on there, but seeing just one, I moved to confirm the appointment of the mayor to the Western Nevada Development District of Christopher Dare.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Ratty, to recommend Christopher Dare on the Western Nevada Development District. Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm looking at the W N D D resolution, and it does state two private citizens involved in business, industry, professions, or education shall be appointed by the Sparks City Council to serve on the W N D D Board for a two-year term. And that is as well as a city council member and an alternate.
Can we have somebody else already appointed?
Yes. Councilman Schmidt has somebody on there.
And that would be an appointment. This is, yeah, that's the same thing. That's what this is, yeah.
So we have one?
We have one already, yeah. That's the, that's.
So this would be the second citizen?
Yes, yes.
They both tell you his name.
We had a Mr. Howard that I was under the understanding he did not reapply.
Well, he's been on for two years, is what you're saying.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Here's the problem. We got the agenda item set for one, one individual. We can always revisit this at another time. You can make your selection of the single individual now. This is background information that I don't think the city council was provided with. More of the public alerted to in the, in the agenda item, so I think it'd be appropriate at this point in time to follow the agenda item, and then if we need to look into this and clarify it, we can certainly do that at a subsequent meeting.
Thanks, Chuck, for bailing me out here. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Everyone understand the motion. Mr. Lawson?
No, you're going to talk. Well, I just wanted to, I guess we can work it out. The next W N D D meeting is the eighth of April, and they occur every other month. So I guess we can deal with it because our next council meeting is until the thirteenth.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote. Passes three to one. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Derrick, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So if we've got another.
Yeah, you could do, you could do it at the next meeting.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll check that out. Yeah. Kristi, you'll check that out and let us know, and then if there isn't availability of one more, please put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Or let, let the council know what's going on.
Okay.
By email. Thanks.
And you'll have, if, if there is a vacancy, you'll have to advertise it the same as you did previously.
All righty then. Speeding up.
Mr. Mayor.
I knew you were dressed up for some reason. I couldn't figure out what it was. Okay, number nine point three, Consideration and, Consideration and Possible Award of the Two Thousand Fifteen Street Rehabilitation Unit Two Bid Number Fourteen Fifteen dash zero one one. P W P W A two zero one five oh eight oh to Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of five hundred and seven thousand dollars, and five hundred and seven thousand seven dollars. Go ahead, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, John Erickson, Transportation Manager. As the mayor just indicated, this project is the Two Thousand Fifteen Street Rehabilitation Unit Two Project. The project is located just to the, to the west of Pyramid Way and to the north of McCarran. This is the Village Green subdivision. The project would be to reconstruct and repave Leprey Way as well as Valley Forge Way, do some curb and gutter sidewalk replacement, as well as upgrades to the ADA ramps. We received five bids ranging from five hundred and seven thousand seven dollars up to six hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. The engineer's estimate on the project was five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With the favorable bid, staff is recommending that the contract be awarded to Sierra Nevada Construction. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Erickson? Mr. Smith?
John, does this go in conjunction with, or does it affect the intersection?
No, it does not. That, that's the reason why, when we wanted to get this project out first. We've got forty working days on this job, so we will be completed prior to the work being done on Pyramid McCarran, the RTC project that is currently under design.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Charlie.
So, so it won't be affected, I mean, what, the work that you're just doing won't be impacted by the Pyramid McCarran?
No, no, we will be, no, we will be completed with this project prior to the, the project starting on Pyramid McCarran, the RTC project.
Right, but the RTC project won't impact or do any damage to the work you will just?
We will be out of there before they get started.
And they won't touch what you've done?
Nope. And they will, their project actually ties into the improvements at, at Far Lane, which is, which is right here, but we've coordinated those limits with the RTC.
Okay. I just don't want them to undo what you just did.
No, no.
Anyone else?
Yeah. So, John, we're not including those two cul-de-sacs to the north?
You know, they're, you know, we base our, our program on PCI, and those, those streets just don't fall within that, or PCI pavement condition index. And they just haven't gotten to the, the range where we would need to get in there and rehabilitate those. We've got other streets throughout the city that, that have lower PCI values or pavement condition values that we're focusing on with our program. So to answer your question, no, we're not going to be.
It would make sense to me to do them while we're there, but.
It, it would, and we just, the, the way that the program was developed, we've, we're hopeful that we can get the unit three project done. We're going to be very close on that, the bid on that project. And we opened those bids on Wednesday. Certainly, if there's an opportunity and you folks would like to do some work up there in those, those cul-de-sacs, if we have project money to do that, I think we could probably entertain that.
I think if you talk to the neighbors up there, they're, they're in need of new streets.
Yeah.
But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if there's a way to include it in later on, if we have some extra money, then I'd love to see that done. It makes sense to do it while we're there.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
I move to approve the contract to Sierra Nevada Construction AC five-one-three-zero for two thousand fifteen, Street Rehab, Rehabilitation Unit Two in the amount of five hundred and seven thousand and seven dollars.
Second, Ms. Bybee.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve nine point three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Nine point four, Consideration and Possible Approval of Funding allocations recommended by the Tourism and Marketing Committee for Two Thousand Fifteen Special Events. Mr. Mayberry.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, manager Driscoll, Mr. Adams. I'm Adam Mayberry, city's community relations manager, for the record. I've been asked to introduce item nine point four today. This is the annual allocations that are recommended by the city's Tourism and Marketing Committee for the tourism marketing dollars. As you know, the, this budget is derived exclusively from the hotel room taxes. It's specific and restricted to promotion and marketing for the city of Sparks. So the city's Tourism Marketing Committee chaired by Councilman Ron Schmidt, Councilman Ron Smith is, also serves on that committee, along with Randy Kennedy, who's the appointee from the Nevada Resort Association. I believe Randy Kennedy's in the audience. They met earlier this month after soliciting requests from a variety of event producers and organizers, and the, the list in front of you on the staff report is, is fairly straightforward. Tracy Dominguez, our Parks and Rec Department Director, is also in the audience. She can speak to specifically to any of the events that you may have questions to. Again, this is an annual disbursement that comes forward before this committee for, for final approval. Be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Smith.
You know, I am on the committee, but I do have a question about the dock. Have we made any progress on, on, uh, because everything was kind of up in the air? The dock actually cost twenty-five thousand dollars?
Good afternoon, mayor and council, Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. We were researching, I, my understanding was we were, it was a better opportunity to purchase the dock versus the other way around. So, I was looking at funding sources within Park District Funds to apply the second half to match this tourism and marketing amount so that we could purchase the dock.
So, the dock is here now, right? Is that, is that...
It's not at the lake right now.
No, no, but they have it here in town, don't they?
Yeah, the Sailing Club currently owns it. I don't know its location right now.
Well, as opposed to Sparks and Rec coming up with the money, we, we wanted to have a conversation about paying, if it's fourteen thousand this year and eleven thousand next year. Were they, did they entertain that in the way of the...
You know what? I don't know if that was, if we approached them on that, to be honest with you, and Francine is out ill today, so I can follow up on that first thing tomorrow.
Okay, so just so everybody knows, this fourteen thousand is not committed as of yet. It's just...
Correct.
Set aside just in case?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's being held.
Yeah. So, would you talk to them about, or have Francine talk to them?
Yes.
And there was something else that we talked about.
On the dock?
Purchasing, and then we needed to talk to legal about the...
Yes.
Was our responsibilities if we put it in the lake and...
Okay.
And this dock, by the way, is not just for boats. It gets moved around for different events that we hold down there, which is, which is always requested when they bring their shows here, so...
It's, it's an amenity that will be useful in our attempts to recruit water events, and there are requests, whether it's from triathlons or the dragon boat races, which we have yet to secure. They, they want a portable dock, and we don't have that.
Is Tony, Tony Hawk in it?
No, no, Tony Hawk's not in the water.
He just won't return your calls, will he?
Just call him and tell him Ron's calling.
Yeah.
Now you brought up something.
Oops.
It's a portable dock, so is, can that be used for, like, our kids' free fishing day?
It could be moved.
Absolutely.
Or we could have two docks for fishing day instead of one.
And the city, the city would own it.
I was thinking about yourself, weren't you?
I'm thinking about my kids.
The thought is to...
I was two thousand kids that come out there and fish.
The concept is for the city to purchase it from the Sailing Club, who's already bought it, and have them lease it from us versus the other way, us leasing it from them.
Awesome. Was that a move from the city attorney? Okay, Ms. Bybee?
Um, Adam, I have a question on the, um, can you explain, since it's our biggest item, and because I'm new, what the brand leadership team, what that encompasses? I'm guessing marketing and promotion and things, but, but what does that, what will that money do for us?
Uh, Adam Mayberry, for the record, I appreciate the question, Councilwoman Bybee. Uh, yeah, the, the brand leadership team's been with us for about five years now, and it's a group of, of private community members, and they provide guidance to the city's Tourism Marketing Committee with respect to the implementation of the city's branding campaign, and all that's encompassed over the last several years. Initially started off with heavy recruit eventment, which Tracy and her shop have, have been extraordinarily well at doing. So, the brand leadership team meets on average quarterly. They are spearheading a number of promotional and marketing opportunities for the city. They, they provide recommendations, rather. And so, the brand leadership team always includes funding in the tourism and marketing lineup, and the itemized list include a, about a forty thousand dollar advertising campaign, which would be a presence at the airport. It would include an electronic advertising campaign through Google, and it would include other miscellaneous opportunities through social media. Part of that, also as part of the branding leadership, the B L T funding would include an update to the mobile application. The city has a mobile application, and so we've found over the years that we need to, to keep up with the, the current technology. So, there's funding for that. There's also funding for a small contract with a PR firm that helps administer the affairs. The brand leadership team also provides some guidance and support for the city in terms of its, its marketing promotional recommendations. There's also an, an item that would create a Sparks infographic development, which is a, a piece that we would use to help kind of, in a graphical representation, show the cities, show the economic development areas that we can put forth for prospective businesses that, and residents that are coming. So, it's, it's really kind of a catch-all with respect to implementing the, uh, the city's branding campaign, which we embarked on around oh eight. Does that help? That's your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question about that dock. Does this purchase agreement contemplate a lease-back provision to it as well? Uh, to the Sailing, are, are we talking about money today going to the, to the dock? Or, uh, I'm, I'm concerned that taxpayer money goes into the purchase of a dock, then it essentially becomes a private entity, and we just subsidize a dock. In other words, will our citizens have access to that dock even though it is leased back to the Sailing Club?
This money is just being set aside as potential funding for this purchase. We are still researching the legal side of things and all of that. My understanding is that the general population would not have access. They would have access if they were a participant in the Sailing Club's classes.
Yeah. See, and that bothers me, spending taxpayer money on essentially what is a private endeavor, and the taxpayers, the citizens, have absolutely no benefit from that deal, in other words. All we're doing is subsidizing a private entity's commercial piece of equipment out there.
Basically, they, my understanding is, we would have control over it, and we would...
And, and all the liability associated with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, uh, good. I'll be happy to work with you on whatever agreement we come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You bet. Ms. Ratty?
No, I guess I was thinking of it more like we've contemplated sometimes in Victorian Square where we want to, we want to purchase a stage, or we want to purchase a sound system, or we want to purchase something that so many of our event producers request, that rather than having it, having them lease it all the time and sponsor it, you're bringing down the overall cost of the event for those producers. Is that correct? So, it's not just the Sailing Club, it's potentially...
No, no, we would be using it for our events, but you still have to store it and keep it somewhere on the lake, and that is where it would be utilized by the Sailing Club on that side of the lake.
So, anytime the city is not using it, the Sailing Club would be using it? Is that basically what you were contemplating? Okay, I'll look forward to hearing more about it.
Yeah, there's more work.
And those are the same questions we ask Chet in the meeting, because we didn't know what our legal liabilities would be, and Julia touched on it. I mean, it's just like a stage. We considered buying a stage for downtown that, instead of leasing one every year. So, that, that's the way we looked at it, but of course, you're the attorney, and we will rely on you before we make any purchases. Oh, the other thing is if we don't buy it from them, they want to put it in the lake, and it's their dock. What, what kind of liabilities would that be?
It would be their liability.
Well, yeah, but I mean...
But it's our water.
I mean, what?
But it's on the private side of the lake.
Anyway, that's something we can talk about later.
I'm asking you to talk to you about that.
Okay.
Who says government isn't easy?
Yeah.
We can do, we can do stuff quickly. Uh, any other questions?
One more.
Good.
So, if that doesn't work out, then does the committee meet again, or did you approve a secondary plan for what that fourteen would go to?
It'd go back into the account.
Okay. And just be reallocated, you think, in the next year's cycle, or...
It will be available for next year, yeah, or unless we get a new, um, event this year that comes in late, and that happens quite a bit.
Okay, great.
Can you, for the questions? Looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the funding allocations for the events of the 2015 Special Events Season as recommended by the Tourism and Marketing Committee.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Bybee, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve nine point four is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Nine point five, consideration and possible approval of a settlement. Ms. Severson. Seberson, Severson, Severson?
Severson.
Se, Severson, you got it.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, Chris Severson, Administrative Services Director, for the record. Before you, you have a settlement with an employee, previous employee, Officer Mark Scott. We have entered into a binding arbitration with Officer Scott, and at the conclusion of the arbitration, it is the recommendation of our city attorney that we enter into a settlement with Officer Scott, for which he would resign his employment.
Questions for Ms. Severson? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
I move to approve the settlement between Police Officer Mark Scott and the city of Sparks.
Ms. Ratty? Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve nine point five, the settlement for Mr. Scott, is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Do we have to? Thank you.
Passes unanimously. That's why they call it a settlement. Yeah. He'll get over it. Okay, next is comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public? Comments from the city council and city manager? Mr. Smith?
Um, you know, this came up in the tour mark meeting, and we were talking about the rib cook-off in Burning Man, Burning Man Enns, and they are required to take all of their garbage from the playa, and somewhere in their mind, they think they can drop it off in Sparks, and they're filling up the dumpsters. And I would just like to know if we do get complaints about that, if it is costing us money to do that, and would it be cheaper just to get some bins to put out so they can, instead of dumping them everywhere? So, if we can look into that? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
March twenty-third, 2015, with a roll call. Chairperson Ratty?
Here.
Agency members Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Schmidt, absent. Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Do you have any public comment?
Seeing none, I'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda.
So, moved, second?
Moved by Agency Member Lawson, seconded by Agency Member Martini. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the minutes?
So, moved, second?
Moved by Agency Member Lawson, seconded by Agency Member Martini. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number six, reported bills, claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of February fifth, 2015, through March fourth, 2015?
So, moved, second?
Agency Member Lawson, and was the second?
Martini.
Martini? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Consideration and possible approval to grant emergency spending authority to the redevelopment agency of up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars related to potential hydrocarbon contamination of redevelopment agency property.
I have a question.
Do we have a staff report on this?
We did this last week. We did this last week, yeah.
Anything to add?
We did this, like? Last week. We talked during the council meeting, but not that we know. Yeah, I watched it, yeah.
Chair, I was busy just watching you run a great meeting and forgot that I was in charge of this one. This is, this is a companion item that was in front of the council two weeks ago, and this is related to the discovery of some hydrocarbons down on the square that was done during some research for some due diligence with the, the executive, the exclusive negotiating agreement that we have. So, being that the property is within the agency, we decided we, we'd put it also on the agency's agenda, depending on the amount of money, and the problem will depend on whether the agency has the ability to pay much towards this, so that's why we kind of have it on both, both agendas at this point. So, we would theoretically start with agency money if this was approved, and then the general fund, which was approved two weeks ago, would become the back, kind of the backstop for it. As you know, with these things, it can be a few dollars to a lot, until we know the exact, exactly what's going on. It is our responsibility to clean up whatever's there, since we own it one way or the other at this point.
And so, for, for my clarification, we approved two-hundred-and-fifty thousand on the city council agenda, that would have been general fund dollars. We now have approved two-hundred-and-fifty thousand on the redevelopment agency, that would be redevelopment agency funds.
And the intent is, the, the power that you're giving the manager is to spend up to two-hundred-and-fifty total.
Okay.
Not five hundred, but to be up to two-hundred-and-fifty total. So, if there's two-hundred-and-fifty in the redevelopment fund, we would go there. If not, then it would be to the general fund, up to that maximum dollar between the two funds.
And so, you're saying that we don't know how much money we have available in the redevelopment fund at this point to be able to fund this?
That, when we were doing this quickly, putting pen to paper, trying to figure it out, number one, we did it two weeks ago because we needed to move right away.
Right.
And then now that we have time to get in front of your agency, we're requesting the same thing. Mr. Kronk will make sure that we'll determine how much we have when we kind of get a feel for what we need, and then we'll know if we need the city's backstop beyond the redevelopment agency.
But you're prioritizing redevelopment agency funds first?
Um, that would be where we would start, since it's basically their property.
Questions?
Steve, where's the, um, where do we stand right now? Have they already? You said it? You would have, like, equipment out the next week after we approved it? Have they, and do we have any more information?
The engineering firm has done their investigatory work. They're in the final phases of writing their report. We should have that shortly. If it's not on our desk already, as soon as we know what the report says, we'll forward that information to the council.
Any other questions? Looking for...
Somebody might want to have a public comment.
Oh, yeah. Does, does there anybody who wants to comment on this item? So, um, we're going to ask you, we have to ask you to come up to the microphone so it makes it onto the record, and then if you would do us the favor that once you're done with your comments, if you would get a form from the clerk and fill it out so we can make sure we get your name correct on the record. Thank you. Go ahead and have a seat. Oh, that's okay, please.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Pink, Victorian Inn. I thought there was federal funding for remediation of problems with the water table or the soil.
You did have a grant. Do you want to speak to that, Mr. Driscoll?
So, it is my understanding from our staff that, um, the once we determine what the problem is, what's causing it, and what the remediation might be, there may be several sources of money that could be used to do the cleanup. So, until we know exactly what's there, the dollar amount and, and potential causes, we won't be able to actually apply for those. Obviously, the work that we've had to do so far is something you had to get done right away, so we'll spend city dollars to get the process started. If we can use anyone else's money, we certainly will.
What is the problem?
Uh, so, my, my understanding right now is that's what we're paying for, is to find out exactly what the problem is. what the problem is. So we've got a small sample that let us know that there could be a problem, and what we're paying for is a study to find out what the real problem is.
They've been drilling in the alley behind my motel and doing water samples back there, and I know it has to do with the remediation, but they're quiet about it. This has happened over the last year and a half. They keep coming back and testing.
So this project has only started in the last month or two? So do we have...
Different project, probably, yeah.
Well, if it's in the water table, though, it would affect everyone.
Yeah, we don't know that. It could be in one inch of dirt or eight feet of dirt. There's a gas station there forty years ago. So we...and even if we don't get any federal money, we have to fix it, yeah.
Mr. Driscoll?
We have two things going on.
Okay.
So let me speak to her concern about what's been going on over a period of time. Because of the oil contamination issue that we had years ago, that actually ended up in the settlement and was oil all the way down to the plant or down to the lake, from time to time, as due diligence, we agency contacts through Washington, and they just take a look.
Okay.
Once in a while, make sure there isn't anything from that old issue. The one that we have today in Plain English, there used to be a gas station on that corner back a long time ago, it's been closed for many, many years, when a person that's looking to put a housing project drilled a couple of test holes, found some oil very close to the surface. So we're looking at that particular lot. We've done some additional testing, and that's what we're waiting to hear from the engineering firm. It is a long ways away from the water table. At least, that's the preliminary find, and so now, as soon as we get the report, we'll know what's going on. And we don't know how much or what direction it's going, but the work they've been doing before was based on the previous settlement.
Did that answer your questions?
Sort of.
But I'll just have to talk to Mr. Martini, and he can give you some details.
Okay. Great. And then again, if we could just quickly get you to fill out that form, that'd be great. All right, so any other comments on this issue? All right, looking for...
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
So I have motion to approve by Agency Member Martini, seconded by Agency Member Lawson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. So comments from the public? Comments from the agency or Chief Administrative Officer?
Comments from you. Move to adjourn.
We're done.
Second.